Thank you. All the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation, laws, and justice, and justice for all. Thank you. I came here to see you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm on paper for the nomination. 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 Okay. I'm on paper for the nomination. It's Mayor Greg Mallor. Continue as Mayor Greg Mallor. Continue with an "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? The record shows seven ayes, no nays of me continuing as mayor, and I appreciate the vote of confidence, and thank you very much. So, at this time, we'll move on to roll call. So, um, G or Ray, are you doing the roll call?
Uh, Julie over there.
Oh, Julie, I'm sorry. She's back there. Sorry, Julie, you're in the... You're hiding in the corner, Julie.
Uh. Councilor Gorley.
Here.
Mayor Mallor.
Here.
Councilor Gerson.
Hold it.
Councilor Trask.
Here.
Councilor Coleman. President... Councilor Sanchez.
Here.
Councilor Richards.
Here.
Well, at the record show, we have seven present with no absent. Um, moving on now for consent agenda. There really was no consent agenda in the last meeting, but, um, I guess the first meeting in December, we still need consent, correct? Right? For the minutes? Yeah. So, I asked for consent on the minutes back on 12/8.
So moved. Is that second?
One more than a second. Only bear say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record show, we have seven ayes and no nays. Approval of the consent agenda on December 8th. Um, recognition of visitors, hearing of petitions. Anybody in the public who'd like to come forth and be heard? Do we have anybody online? Okay. Um, that said, we will go to swearing in of a new police officer. Chief Lynn.
Good evening. Congratulations, Chief Councillors, and look forward to working with you. This is kind of a, uh, a first for us. We haven't done this before, but, um, we're gonna start swearing in our new officers here, uh, at council session. So, give you an opportunity to meet them, see them, and hopefully, when you stop by them, you'll know them. So, I'd like to present Sarah Cole. She's our newest officer. We, uh, this is her second day. So, uh, Sarah comes to us from Nebraska. Actually, her and her husband Matthew just moved out here recently, and she has, uh, she was a deputy sheriff back in Nebraska at, uh, Cass County. And so, we were, uh, she moved out here and applied, and we were just ecstatic that, uh, we were able to bring her on board. So, she's got experience, and we look for fantastic things from her. And with that, I'll let, uh, the city manager swear in. All along there. Trying to memorize the whole thing. Yep, come on up here. Keep that.
When you get your picture, pay for it.
Yeah, sorry. If you could raise your right hand, please, you could after me. I, Sarah Cole.
I, Sarah Cole.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home.
And the rules and regulations of the Sweet Home Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Sweet Home Police Department.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
In and for the city of Sweet Home.
In and for the city of Sweet Home.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Just up there. Go to the side.
Right.
So, you're recording Husker's town?
Yes.
She's made graduate from this.
Oh. She's gonna like our weather better, though.
Yeah.
So, you gotta make a decision tonight. Quacks or the beavers? Beavers or the quacks? Beavers or the quacks? You understand?
Give her time. Give her time.
Only two days.
Yeah. Welcome aboard. Well, congratulations, and on behalf of the city of Sweet Home, welcome. Okay, moving on. Uh, quest, uh, request for council action, resolution number 29 for 2020, refinancing the existing city debt for... Systems.
Page 47 of your packet. And I think Director Nish is on the call here with us?
Sorry, here we go again. Again, page 47 of your packet. And I believe Director Nish is on the line, and he can, uh, lead us through this.
Hi, councillors. It's good to be back. What you have before you... We had to make some adjustments to... Can you all hear me?
So, running this back up, so we have to...
So, it, we're not trying to challenge it. It's a correction. Um, some of the information that we gave you, it was the wrong numbers. Um, so, we're not asking to reconsider. We simply want to adopt and need to adopt with the correct numbers in there. So, it's, uh, it's to correct the typographical error.
Can you all hear me?
Yep, I'm sorry. You're correct.
I had read it. I was trying to make sure I knew where...
So, this is open for council. Any council discussions, any questions? Okay, this is a directive, so I need a directive to move it forward.
Mr. Mayor, so moved is recommended.
Motion second. When you go by roll call, please.
Councilor Gorley.
Aye.
Mayor Mallor.
Aye.
Councilor Gerson.
Aye.
Councilor Trask.
Aye.
Councilor Coleman.
Aye.
Councilor Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilor Richards.
Uh, just real quick, Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt. Um, I need to remind everybody that when you wanna speak, you've gotta, even just to say aye, we need you to make sure the little green ring is on, so everybody can hear you. Sorry, I know we're all out of practice. It's been, uh, been a month, so...
I mean, everybody just forgets about this.
Yeah.
Do we need to do that again?
I, I don't think so. I just, just for clarification.
It wasn't, but it is now.
Like I said, everybody is getting used to it.
Yeah.
Yes. So, um, moving on now to, um, new business. Request for council, uh, council action amendments to the commercial exterior improvement program on page 47.
All right, I think, uh, Blair is on the line, I believe. Logged in.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me? Can you hear me in the council chambers?
I don't... I think they did something.
Yeah. Um, Brandon, do you think they have the wrong speaker selected?
Yeah.
Do you need me to go in there?
Yeah. Actually, I can take over the computer.
Ha, ha, take it over.
Everybody else can still hear you, though.
Oh, that's right. So, I'll try to... Sorry, folks.
As in, everybody can hear you.
Uh, yeah. Thanks.
Okay, Blair, I think you're good to go.
Do you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Perfect. All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, so, we've talked about this a number of times over the last few months. Uh, we currently have a commercial exterior improvement program. It's essentially a facade improvement grant where a commercial property can, uh, submit a project for consideration, and the city, um, there's a committee that reviews that project, and, uh, they can receive, uh, up to 50% of a project reimbursed, uh, the cost of that project, up to a cap of $5,000. Um, that, those projects are limited to things essentially that are visible, uh, in the exterior of the building. Um, we have talked before about the need to update this program because, uh, commercial businesses and commercial property is prohibitively expensive to update and improve, and so, $5,000 really doesn't get you very far. And so, uh, in the past, what the council has indicated and, uh, desire to see has been an increase of, uh, that cap up to 15,000. Um, and then, also, one thing that was requested was, uh, that you could get up to 5,000 without any match at all for, for a project. Um, the intent of this project, of this program is to beautify our commercial areas, to make the city of Sweet Home more inviting to visitors and, uh, and residents. And, and as we've seen with some of the projects that this program has helped fund, uh, there are some properties that have very much improved, and it's, it's been great to see. The highlight, I think, is probably, uh, we have assisted the Rio Theater with, uh, a lot of their improvements. Um, there have been assistance to, uh, Thriftway, to Dairy Queen, to O&amp;M Tire, uh, a number of places, um, that have benefited from this grant program. In your packets, there are all of the documents associated with the program that have been updated with, uh, the feedback that I've gotten from you, and you can review those in red are all of the changes. The, the main document is on page, starts on page 53 of your packet and contains all of the, uh, main changes, essentially what I've just described. The only other change that this adds is that, um, well, two other changes that this adds. Uh, one, um, after a successful project is completed, and for at least one month after that, uh, it requires applicants to display a sign that we provide that says that it was funded in part with, uh, with this program, so the city can get some, some recognition of, uh, of these efforts. The other thing that it changes is previously, if a project was going to be larger than the cap, that the committee could recommend that it be funded at a higher level, and the city manager could approve that at a higher level beyond the, the, the cap. At this point, if, it was discussed that if we were going to go, if we're gonna increase the cap to 15,000, the council indicated that they wanted any, uh, any proposals to go beyond that to come directly to the council. And so, I have it in here that upon recommendation of the committee and the city manager, uh, those applications would go to the council. In a nutshell, that's what it is. If you have any questions about the program or about these changes, I can, I can, uh, take those now.
This time, it's open for any questions of the councillors.
So, Mr. Mayor, we did not discuss having a limit on this. We just, it's an open-ended... I mean, as far as the maximum number of grants we would give. Um, we could potentially have a lot of money going out of this account without putting a limit on it. I don't know whether we need to do that or not. I'm just bringing that up.
Uh, per, even per the context of the request, it technically is capped at 15.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, the number of 15,000's going out.
The number of grants, do you mean?
Yes, the number of grants to be given.
Own number of grants, I'm sorry.
Right. We haven't set a limit on that, and I don't know whether we want to or not. I'm just saying that's something we haven't talked about.
I'm, I see your point on that. We really haven't had a lot of applicants come forth. I mean, we've, we've had some that taken advantage of it, but it's not like an excessive amount of applicants have came forth. Um, the, for those new on the council, it was the SIP... I don't know if you've explained where this program, the background on it, but it's made up of, um, citizen of the community, uh, business owner of the community, um, a gentleman from the LBCC slash chamber, and then, I, I'm on the SIP program, and then, we've had even the city manager and a few others sitting on our, on the grant process. And basically, we review the applicant and see if it meets all the criteria, and, and if you haven't seen the, um, application or the, the requirements, you can grab one and take a look at it, but it's pretty in-depth, and it's, they've gotta meet it in order to qualify. We've actually turned some down because they didn't. Either it was a zone challenger, or, for some reason, they got turned down because it didn't meet the requirements. And then, I think there's one, one app, I mean, there's, we early on had, uh, a business owner thought he can apply several times within the calendar year, and we rejected that. We're only allowing one application within the, the one year, so they just can't send several at one time. So, but I, I understand, Councilor Gerson, we've not really capped it, how many can? Cause you can have a tremendous amount of, of people applying, but in the past, we haven't, so that's up to the council if we wanna do that.
And if I may, Mayor, uh, uh, those kinds of limits can also ta, be taken care of budgetarily, uh, where we can set a budget, and it doesn't, uh, affect the rules of the program. It's just the amount of funding allocated in a given year to, to the program. So, those are certainly options, uh, for the council to consider if you want to put a cap on, or to put a limit on the number of grants that we issue.
And for those new councillors, for the, for the record, and don't quote me on the number, but it's, the fund's still sitting at about $400,000, so it's still a ma, good chunk of money in an account, because they can go by pretty fast if we're not careful, so...
So, Mr. Mayor, I was under the, um, understanding that we actually wanted businesses to be able to take advantage of this. So, capping it per year or something wasn't really in our best interest. I thought that the bigger concern was how many projects a grantee was utilizing this, how many times, how much was their limit for that grantee. Um, that was the bigger concern, that one entity would suck this up. Um, and by even bringing it back to the council to vote on, sometimes that friend peer pressure is unfair, you know? And so, I, I, I'm not opposed to having, um, that committee review or some safety net there, but I think having multiple businesses take advantage of this, we, we should celebrate that.
Yeah. And then, I'll refresh my memory before we took our Christmas break, and this was brought before council last. We had, part of the discussion also was possibly, Blair, correct me if I'm wrong, that we were looking at maybe zoning this down a little bit, so another maintaining maybe to downtown corridor or in the areas of real need, but that was one of the topics that came up, too, before we adjourned.
That's, that's correct. That was a previous proposal that I had made, that, that the council had decided against, so to keep it at all the commercial zones in the city would be eligible.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick?
Yeah.
Just as a reminder to the council, this money is not local tax money. The money in this fund is left over from a federal CBDG grant from years and years ago, that we didn't expend the entire amount of the funds, and the, uh, federal government just gave us permission to keep it and use it for similar endeavors. Uh, and so, the council has, has, um, historically made a motion and created this economic development fund with this money alone. Uh, the city has put some in and passed budgets, uh, and Brandon can correct me if I'm wrong, but smaller amounts of like $40,000 a year to help with it. Um, and if I could, Councilor Gerson, I'm interpreting your, your question as a bit of concern, because we have a lot of projects that we're trying to earmark this money for. The railroad crossing, uh, development of, uh, of the park for the jamboree, um, and we've kind of had that discussion last year during our, our goal-setting session, and I think it's our intent to continue that discussion, uh, with this year's retreat. Um, so, I, I think that's, if I understand, I think that's what you're trying to convey, the concern of we have a lot of projects that we're wanting to use, and while about 450,000 seems like a lot of money, the railroad crossing alone is gonna require probably double that amount, um, in itself, uh, to get across at 24th Avenue, so...
Well, we also have a $75,000 request on the budget to, on agenda tonight, which will come out of that fund, too. So, I guess that, I just felt maybe we needed to put a cap on the amount of money. I don't think the number of grants. I just think we might wanna cap the amount of money we're gonna say we won't spend out of this, for this project.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask my first question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any sort of requirement or percentage to spend some of that money with businesses locally to do the improvements?
There is not such a requirement at this time.
No, there isn't.
I think it might be helpful to some small businesses in town to spend some of that money locally instead of outsourcing it, if that could be considered.
It's a very good idea. I'm, yeah, it hadn't, hadn't been brought up, but yeah. I think the intent is to keep it local. I mean, that has been our main intent, so, for our businesses. Any other comments on it?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
I need to clarify something in what you just said. Are you thinking about spending money outside of your city?
No, um, what I'm saying is I noticed that, because I did work on the project prior to being on the council for Thriftway parking lot, that it was, um, done by Knife River, and so, I don't know if there could be some sort of clause where a percentage of that funding has to be spent with local businesses, instead of going to businesses outside of the city and spending the money outside of the city.
In ones, in ones, in one sense, though, we do part of the SIP process near, and council, we, long as we don't have a quorum, and I'll make sure we un, understand the quorum for, uh, in a, in a meeting, that you can always attend one of the SIP grant meetings, just letting us know in advance, so that we don't have that quorum to see the process, but, um, these applicants come with estimates from companies, and they most generally are going out to get what the best estimate they can for the project. So, sometimes, we've had three, four, five estimates from different companies showing us that they did their due diligence of going out and finding the best price to do the service for what they're trying. And, um, Thriftway parking lot was one of the grants we gave, and that was one of the things, was they had several estimates showing various aspects of their project, and that they were doing their due diligence on getting the best price for the project. and that they were doing their due diligence on getting the best price for the project. That's the pay that when we get our applicant and Blair, correct me if I'm wrong, but we get the application and usually it's that thick of just one applicant of all the paperwork that they've submitted for us for approval. And it's a it's a process. It's not just a quick decision when it comes for a SIP grant program.
I understand about that. I was just curious if we could set aside a certain percentage of the funds to say, please check with local businesses to see if they could provide these services before you go outside of the city to use the city's grant money outside of the city to help the local businesses as well.
Mr. Mayor, I I'm I'm not sure we can dictate to a business owner who he gets to do his job. I 100% agree with you. The O and M people, they had somebody local do theirs. Maybe that's not possible for everyone and there's a timeframe if they want to bill and make. And so but I agree with you. Uh, we tried to do more than the city all. It didn't work out so well, but uh you see what we got. But I agree, we should do everything we can with people inside the city. There's no doubt about that.
No, I agree with what her point is. It is difficult, but living in Sweet Home for 50 years, and I can tell you right now that we we stand by our our own people in our community. And we everybody's a real close knit. And I can't speak for everybody, but I think everybody in this town protects their own, tries to take care of their own before they go out and so.
There's not a lot of opportunity here to seek those services, I'm aware. But if we could maybe say, have you tried to seek sources locally? And if they've tried, then they've done what they needed to do. And I'm not saying dictate to anybody about how to spend their money, but it would be nice if some of it could go right back into the community instead of outside of the community.
Hey, Blair, I don't think there's any verbiage on that that grant application, is there?
Uh, not currently. Uh, we can certainly add something into the packet and add that encouragement. The uh, the the only concern I have at all about anything is if we go too far into a requirement, it it will uh have consequences that may be unintended for the program. Well, that is, uh, you know, because this is still a match. So we're we're basically, we are still um trying to to get them to spend their money in a certain way. Um, but there there is going to be a it'll it'll add some complexity to the to the process. I'm not opposed to it, but it's just going to add time uh and and work for both the applicant and staff. Uh, that being said, if it's the will of the council, we can certainly do that. Um, it's really, really easy to to put recommendations together. And and I'd love to get the word out to um to those who do any kind of renovation work that um we can have them, uh, for example, I'll be talking in the future about a a voluntary business registration program. We could have them register with the city and let us know what kind of work they do. And we can provide that information to applicants so that applicants realize, hey, here's all these businesses in town that can do this work for you.
So, Mr. Mayor, it's obvious from our downtown that our businesses are struggling. We have a lot that are empty right now. And we have this program set aside to help benefit the community and the businesses within our community in the first place. And they're not taking advantage of it like they could. So I think putting at this time, especially with COVID and the economic crisis around, putting anything else on this to inhibit them from being successful in doing a new facade, we should refrain from that. Maybe revisit it later, but at this point, I think the language that we're looking at is okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I one more comment and I'll I'll quit. I say that all the time, but it doesn't work. But anyway, um, I I would just think that most businesses in town are going to get the best deal that they can get, and that might not be in the city. Uh, that's unfortunate, but that's just the way it is.
Unfortunately, you you can't force them. But knowing a lot of the business owners, they try their their very best because they like to keep their business local and take care of their own in town. I've seen that so many years. But in on on one sense, but on the other sense, there is certain things they just can't get in town, and they may have to step out. And we can't force them. I I see both sides of this discussion here, so. Um, and again, just for those of information, some of the downtown businesses ha- every one of the downtown businesses are empty. I know for a fact they have been approached about the SIP program and to take advantage of it. Some have chose not to, and obviously for other reasons. But and we can't force them to take part of it. So we're still working through it to hopefully they will take part of it and we can improve our downtown.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Blair.
Yes.
Do you think it's possible and to the if the council would would approve just maybe a line that says we would encourage you to use local contractors whenever possible? It's not a requirement, um, but just a line of encouragement if that would maybe um.
That's really easy to add into it, and I I don't think it would need uh really much in the way of approval because that's not really changing uh the the base requirements uh that people are going to be judged on. Um, but also, I think getting the word out and having uh having contractors and and folks who do this work, get I can get their name on a list and I can distribute that list with every single application. And uh, and that gives them a leg up uh to to get estimates out to customers here in town.
Does that sound okay with the council? We will certainly try to encourage it as much as we can and.
I don't have a problem with that. I think this is simple wording to refine.
Okay, we can try to add that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do have another question. Uh, so Blair, on the requirements, it says that on page, well, I don't know, 62, that um the business would be in the commercial zone in the gateway and downtown areas of Sweet Home, the Main Street corridor before between First and 18th.
Oh, that must be, I think I neglected to remove that. I apologize. That that's from an older draft. Um, it should it should go back to the older language that eligible businesses must be located within a commercial zone in the city of Sweet Home. So the rest of it, uh, I will amend and remove. That that was from my previous proposal, and I uh forgot that it was present still on the review form. That's that's the review form that I use and that the committee uses. That's not something that goes out to it with the applications. And so uh, it's it's an internal document that can be updated quite easily.
Okay, thank you.
May I offer your questions on this? This time, I need a directive of council.
Mr. Mayor, I surrender the directive as amended. One second, ma'am.
I have a motion second. All in favor, by real call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Aye.
Councilor Gerson.
Aye.
Councilor Trask.
Aye.
Councilor Coleman.
Aye.
Councilor Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilor Richards.
Aye.
Councilor Gorley.
Aye.
Dr. Ricketts, we have seven ayes with no nays. Approval of the amendment to this commercial exterior improvement program. Moving on now to request for council action, downtown streetscape and parking plan contract, page 65.
Let's begin with, turn this over to Blair.
All right, it's me again. So um, this is also something that we've talked about for a while. And to bring the new councilors up to speed, one of the goals that was identified earlier this year um was to uh do a get a downtown streetscape and parking plan. And the intent behind this is that we're trying to make our downtown a much more pleasant place to be, a place that is a destination, that is comfortable for pedestrians, for visitors, for uh for our residents. And the areas that we have control over in the downtown are pretty much limited to the public right of way. Uh, we with our seat program, obviously, we try to encourage property owners to improve their properties. And we can put some money into that, but we it doesn't give us much control over which properties get improved and what those improvements are. Um, I mean, we have some influence, but but not a ton. But in our in our right of way, we do have significant power over what is present in the right of way. That is, uh, what do the sidewalks look like? What kind of benches or street furniture are present? Um, what is the landscaping like? What kind of artwork might be present? And and then what what's the public parking situation? How uh how much, how many spaces do we have and so forth? And does it meet the need? So the intent behind the downtown the downtown streetscape and parking plan idea is to um get a plan in place so that all of the in the downtown area, which in this uh case is pretty much defined as uh the Main Street and Long Street corridors from, I believe, uh, 9th to 18th, uh, roughly. Um, and so the if we take those areas and have a defined plan of, okay, this is what we want our typical street, uh, our our street tree uh locations to be. And this is, these are the types of street trees we want. And this is the landscaping we want, the benches, et cetera, uh, street lighting, all of that stuff. If we have a plan so that it's all consistent throughout those that area and um and we have all those those things identified so that we have not only a plan in place, but also cost estimates of of what these projects would cost, we can move forward uh and gradually implement uh improvements to to that plan so that eventually we have a a very pleasant downtown that um that incentivizes business owners also to improve. And also kind of, uh, you know, if it's even if there aren't uh a ton of businesses in the area, if you make it a pleasant place to be and you increase that traffic, the business community reacts to that and sees the traffic and then responds by providing more uh more businesses, more services and so forth. And so this is a attempt, basically, kind of an if you if you build it, they will come idea. And um, so we went out for, we put out a request for proposals last fall outlining what we wanted. And uh, and there's a copy of that in your packet so that you can read uh what we what we've told people and what we're that we want. We did get two responses to uh to that RFP. Um, the 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 response that scored the best was from uh Doherty Landscape Associates, DLA. Uh, Doherty Landscape Architects, I should say, DLA is their is the acronym that they use. And so we've negotiated this uh contract and scope of services and pricing with them to accomplish this uh this task. Um, this comes out of the same pot of money that we were talking about with the seat program. And so uh, there's approximately 460,000 in that fund right now. Uh, the this the scope of work that's identified, because we had such a large area identified, uh, the way we worked out the scope of services is to have a base level of um of services they would provide with a base cost. And then there would be optional uh items on top of that that uh the city can add if they if we choose. And so the result of that is that we have some flexibility with uh with what we decide to do. The base cost would be uh $33,220 for this conceptual design and the the um community meetings and some uh concept plans for about half of the overall area. And then if we choose to add more to it, there could be, for example, this final design for the entire project area for an extra 12,000. Uh, there could be an additional full parking study uh for an extra 2,000 and so forth, all listed in the in those optional services that you see in your packet. Um, so the I I know that a lot of times in the public, th- these are large amounts, but you can consider the the amount of time that we're paying for uh for the base, for example, for the base uh services. It's about 158 hours of work. Um, well, 100, actually, 158 hours of work from the staff and 150 hours from the principal. So we're paying for 308 hours of of work uh for them to put in on this. Um, and these are people who have been in business for a while and have uh significant, you know, they're they're this isn't, these aren't cheap professionals to hire, uh, I should say. So um, this their pricing is competitive with other firms of their type. Um, this is what we reviewed and and been able to generate. And so now I just basically, I hope you you've been able to review the materials that I sent out and and you can ask any questions you uh you feel need to be asked for this project. Um, we would like to get it moving forward in in some form. And my recommendation personally is that I I'd like to I'd like to go big. I'd like to have a full plan that we can move forward with um that can be formally adopted so that businesses know what's coming. It may take a while for us to be able to fund all the improvements, but I firmly believe in being committed to a goal and that um that good things happen to those who plan for it. So um, I would be happy to take any questions you have about what this work is and um and what uh what you'd like, how you'd like to move forward with it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question right after that. So the amount of time that's going to be taken from in-house.
Where's that number?
Say, I'm sorry, you broke up. What's your question?
So the amount of time that the in-house people are going to do, the 100 and how many hours there were, where is that in this figure?
Sorry, the I'm looking, it's not in-house people that are doing it. When I said staff, it's their staff. So uh, they have the hours on this on this scope of services divided up between their principal, uh, their principal landscape architect, and then the staff that are assisting uh the principal. So um, if you see on that, let me see, what page of your packet is that? Um, it's on page.
I never have numbers on my pages, by the way.
Oh, you don't?
No. That's okay, I'm on the page that I need to be on.
Okay, so you see the the list of uh of services?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I just wanted to know if we if we had people in our own.
No, no, those those staff hours are not our people. Those are their people.
Okay, I can live with that.
One question I'm going to have, Blair, is is going to come back down to how well the ODOT is going to play with us.
Mm-hmm. These these folks um are used to dealing with ODOT. They're used to dealing with uh with communities that have a state highway running through them. And so they do know what is reasonable to ask and what is what is reasonable to expect. So um, that's part of their job is to is to craft a plan that is and and I've had extensive just extensive discussions with them about this, to craft a plan that is viable, that is um, that is not a pie in the sky dream uh when it comes to approval from from state agencies, but it's something that is that is doable.
Gee, maybe we can be lucky enough to get a contact with ODOT.
We have contacts with them.
I'm still waiting for my great, great, great grandkids to see the sidewalk out here at State Point, but.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So Blair, would you give me a rationale for wanting all the optional services? I mean, I heard you say that you wanted that you see the plan as something that is future. And having it in place gives us that goal to work towards.
Right.
I just need a little bit more rationale because it more than doubles the cost.
True, true. So the rap, my rationale for it, I mean, and there's a number of things here for the rationale. What my feeling and my view is that the the when you have a plan like this and you want you have it, you want a vision for your overall downtown, right? Regardless of how long it takes you to get there, you want to make sure so that when you get to the point where you want to expand beyond the one spot that you finished, you that you have some a plan that's consistent with what you've already done. And so having a plan that is that covers the entire area, in my opinion, uh, gets you there better because you, even though it may be quite a while before you can afford to do improvements at the very edges of the plan, um, having everything set so that everything is consistent and planned for is uh it it can save you a lot in the long run because otherwise you're looking at at rework or uh adjusting things that have already been done and so forth. Um, the other reason why I I like the idea of of going for the full thing is that it includes items like the parking study that um the public has has indicated that they're concerned about. Uh, there's there's not a day that doesn't go by that where somebody talks to me about parking downtown. Having all that planned, that study, having the da- the data in place of what we're doing and why um will be invaluable for not only answering those questions in the future, but also making improvements that uh that will help our downtown, help our businesses.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Go ahead.
Um, we have a a guest viewer who asked how does the beautification committee fit into this?
I'll let Blair answer that one.
So my understanding is the the beautification committee does a lot of of work in the median and and landscaped areas in our downtown. This would not take the place of that. If if anything else, it would probably increase the need for more volunteers on the beautification committee because we we basically are saying we want to have beautiful landscaping throughout the downtown. And we want to have a plan for it. And those are all those areas are all going to either need to be maintained by our uh our wonderful public works personnel, sorry, Greg, um, or uh or some volunteers that will will be needed. Um, because this, when you have a a beautiful area like this that you want to increase the visitors who are coming toward it, it's not something that you can just put in and leave it alone, at least when it. at least when it comes to landscaping. There is going to be some maintenance of those landscaped areas that will be necessary to keep it fresh, to keep it lovely.
Ray, you have a question?
I think I would just add to that, that there will be a public input process through this, as they work through this plan. And so members of that committee will have the opportunity to be heard and share in their concerns and experiences as well, as well as other members of the public.
Mr. Springer? Yeah, and remember that when, we're not just looking at what sidewalk is playing, you got these mediums, but there's also going to be landscaping suggestions, I would imagine, on what type of vegetation we're going to put in there that's low maintenance, longevity for size, so we're not overgrowing their planters, those type of things. And remember, having a, to support Blair, having a plan that's conceptualized, supported by not only council but by the town and the community, then opens up avenues and doors for dollars, like an example for Sankey Park. We had a shovel-ready plan, it had been vetted through, and we went out and got state dollars because we were ready to go. This is if transportation dollars or other opportunities come up, or if we want to dictate to developers when they come down there, we need to have this vetted out and in some sort of way planned and how we're going to go forward with our downtown area.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm not for a street scape, and I really want to stay, but my concern is, I've been around for a while, and I've never seen one of the pre-existing plans that were presented, or even the council has never sat down and looked at them or had a conversation. So I kind of feel like this comes to us, not with us. And so I want to make sure that we're definitely, because ultimately, when things go wrong, we're the ones who feel like it. And so I would like to know what recommendations are actually being done, seating to seating, what is the input, landscaping to landscaping, what are you talking about with your asking for, to a greater degree than what we think it is possible? And so that's my concern, it just kind of eats at me that, you know, we've paid for this over and over again, what's so different about this that we can't utilize together? What is, how are we going to ensure that that doesn't happen again? I want to do this, I just want to make sure that we do it, so this.
Well, Mr. Mayor, history will tell us that we did one of these many, 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 many years ago, and nothing ever happened without that I'm aware of. My concern is, and I'm for this too, because we've talked about it forever, but my concern is, a little bit of my concern is, is this the proper time to spend the money right now? And so I'm just a little bit on the, I don't know about that. So, but I'm for this, but I agree with Councilor Gorley that, you know, we need to be on top of this, we need to have reports and tell us what they're looking at and give us a plan, whether it's after the $3,000 or whatever it is, you know, because we can be quick in the dark and we spend a lot of money and not get any results, so.
Councilor.
I shall talk really loud.
Sorry, the first thing I did was to read the park's master plan. You're welcome, I'm just going to say you're welcome to everybody. And I was impressed, one, that the city had that document, two, I've been excited to see the Public Works be able to implement the master plan that was on the.
To get that prepared ahead of time. And I think that this is a good time because that money is grant money that we have.
Used to prepare. Also agree with Councilor Gorley, though, that I'd like. I would like some involvement in it as well, so I don't know what kind of involvement that means, but I don't want to get into the weeds too much. But I think this is a good time, it seems like a lot of money, but I think because we had one, Sankey Park looks the way it does today.
I'm all for it, except I'm hoping that we do have council input on this and community input on this. Because in the past years, and I hate to bring up a little can of worms, but when ODOT got involved, you look at downtown, they had their say in the, how the parking is, and actually businesses lost parking spaces. They had bumpouts and a lot of creativity that was thrown at them. And in my opinion, it actually didn't help businesses, it hurt them when you have all those fancy, fancy sidewalks, which, you know, it looks great on paper, but when you take away some of their parking spaces, I don't think that helps, it hurts. You know, I look over in Sisters, Oregon, you know, they've got this nice, beautiful downtown, they've got these fancy sidewalks and all this creativity, and it does look great, but in my opinion, it's also taking away from a lot of parking. And so a lot of the, your customers are going to have to park a block away or better to go visit your business. So we want to keep in mind, do some, you know, sidewalk adjustments, we should have a say and so should the public. And so that would be my only concern, and with ODOT and what they come up with.
Like, Mr. Mayor, so any plan that comes out of this is adopted by the council. The park's master plan was adopted by the council. Any kind of master plan we have will be absolutely adopted and approved by the council before staff or anybody else does work on it. That being said, you also control the purse strings in the budget process, so you not only have to approve the plan, but then if the plan's not going the way you want, we just pull the funding, quite simply. So you absolutely have absolute control over the plan as it moves forward. It will absolutely include a public process for public input, in which the council will also certainly be involved throughout that process. It would work. Everybody should have the opportunity to be heard in it before it's adopted and implemented, certainly.
They stated that when they were before the simple ideas, that it would go to committee, but it didn't say anything about the council before it was found. And so I think that at this stage, I would like to see it, when we still have choices.
Blair, I have another question from Mr. Mayor. So is the $33,000, is that going to get us to a point where they can tell us what the, kind of what the plan is, or is it going to be after the $75,000?
No, there is a, there is a plan that they give us at the 33, for the base amount, yes. And so we are getting a product out of that, it's just not over the full area, and it doesn't include as much of the data for like the parking plan, or the lighting consultation, or some of the civil engineering reviews and things like that. And I've been trying to follow the conversation, there's been problems with the audio, so I haven't heard all of your comments, but some of the questions that you've, or some of the concerns that you've raised, I just wanted to address real quick. We've talked about having done this before, and I've got all the previous stuff on my desk that I've reviewed, and there has been work done before that's similar to this, but it's, it's, it's full of ideas rather than actual designs. And so the problem with ideas is that I don't have a project from that. I don't have something that I can go ahead and hand off to an architect and say, hey, we want this, and have the engineers go forward with it and get it done. The intent behind, at least my intent, and my, what I'd like to see out of this is designs and actual cost estimates, so that we know, okay, next step to get to this, this is what we put out for this particular project, and we have them phased so that we can do, you know, take our baby steps to getting the downtown we want. The projects that I've seen from the past don't have that level of detail that would be needed for that.
Any other questions, Councilor?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more. Blair, is there some benefit for us to show them what we had from before, or is that just not on the books? I don't know if it would be to our advantage or not, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think, and that's part of them doing their homework, is to get that stuff too. And I will definitely be sharing everything that we have. The main thing, though, is we want to make sure that what we are sharing and what we move forward with is what the public currently wants. There may have been proposals or ideas before that have already been proven to be unnecessary or not pertinent to our time. I don't know that, but that certainly is good information for them to go off of, and we'll make sure that they have it all.
One more thing. Mr. Mayor, I remember when we were going to go, I get these two cities mixed up, Independence and Monmouth, we were going to go up there and have the guys show us what they've done downtown, and if you've not been there, if you've not been there, it's amazing. I don't know how much people pull in, of course, it's a college area, but, and we didn't get to go because of circumstances, but I still wish we could go ahead and do that at some point if we can. This COVID thing's got everything goofed up, but it would be nice for us to be able to go up there and check it out, maybe after that individually or something, I don't know, but anyway, that's just my thought.
Well, speaking to that, Monmouth did the streetscape, looks really nice, but it doesn't generate more business or income.
Should be independent one, that's. I guess what I want to say.
That's good to know. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, will this include a cost breakdown of the construction as well as the ongoing maintenance to take care of these improvements?
So the, if, one of the optional items that we can select is cost estimates for either half of the overall site or cost estimates for the entire project area, that's for all of the construction. I don't think that it will necessarily include cost estimates for maintenance, mainly because the main maintenance is going to be the same kind of maintenance we do for sidewalks and for streets. That being said, most of this area is also ODOT territory along Main Street, and so we're not going to be doing the street maintenance for that anyway. But landscaping, I think, is going to be the main thing that is going to be a maintenance cost for us that will be different than what we've already done before. But I don't think that there will be necessarily cost estimates for that, for that maintenance work, but we can certainly get some ideas for you.
Any other questions? I know that when it comes time to doing the work, we do send it out for bidding, and we usually are seeing three, four, five, six bids come in. So we leave it up to the city to look at what's the best bid, best price, but getting the best bang for our buck and quality of work and everything involved. Any other questions? I need a council directive.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the plan as presented, including the optionals, which I'm not happy to be spending that kind of money, but including the optionals at $75,000, whatever it is.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, by roll call, please.
Councilor Gerson?
Aye.
Councilor Trask?
Aye.
Councilor Coleman?
Aye.
Councilor Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilor Richards?
Aye.
Councilor Gorley?
Aye.
Mayor Mahler?
Aye. Let the record show, we have seven ayes with no nays of approval of the contract. Moving on now to request for council action, resolution number one for 2021, Willow Street Neighborhood Local Improvement District, LID, this is known on page 127.
Yes, this is basically an LID, a local improvement district, it's in the Willow Street neighborhood area down there. There's maps and everything in your packet, but basically it boils down to, we need a resolution passed to start the process, and the resolution, I'm sure I forget, I want in its own little separate paragraph, Julie already knows about this, "This resolution shall take effect upon its passage and approval." We have that just in, right above the pass in the one now, we'll add that. Anyway, with that being said, basically the resolution just calls for three viewers and an alternate to be appointed. I've contacted four people at the bottom of the background text, Dave Hawley, Charlene Adams, Tim McQuarrie, and Nancy Patton, and they all said that they would be viewers. And basically, they're just going to take this into information, staff's going to meet with them, give them information, talk about the plat and the maps and the properties and the costs, and then make a report called the viewers' report, come back with the recommendations to the council on options that they may have, what they think about, different questions that the council may have to answer in this going forward, and that sort of thing, the boundaries of the LID, that sort of things, all those questions will be reviewed by the reviewers, and then we'll put out a written report, and then after the written report, it's put in the paper, and it's also, each owner is notified. And then basically, at a hearing, you have another council meeting, and you have a hearing to hear objections or remonstrances, as it were, people for and against, or want amendments to what they see in the viewers' report. And then after all of that, council reviews the reviewers' report, hears what everybody has to say, and then basically the council makes decisions on what they think is best to do, go forward or not, or make changes and go forward, that sort of thing. But this resolution that we have here, resolution number one for 2001, just basically calls for the viewers to be appointed, and then add the notice in the paper and then notice to the owner so we can get the process started. And then whatever else you need to know out of my RCA, I'll certainly answer any questions.
Any questions, the councilors?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Is there going to be somebody from the council on that crew?
No, on the viewers?
Yeah.
No, no, they're supposed to be, as I read the ordinance, it's asking for three people that are not on, basically not on the council, some neutrals that come in and sort of give you what they think about the situation, and then it comes back to council to make decisions. These, like it says in here, they give recommendations, and then council makes a decision on all of it. This will give you some input, what they think.
So, Mr. Mayor, so this is, Robert, so this is the first step?
Right, this is the first step, and then basically, whether you follow state law or ours, it goes into, I didn't want to get into that too much because it gets more complicated, but basically, after this all happens, and you just, if you decide to go forward, then there's ordinances are passed, according to ours, and they could be, you figure it all out ahead of time and do all of your stuff, and then the project's done, and at the end you pass another ordinance saying, we did all of this, and adjusts is up and down. Or you take the ordinance here, the first ordinance that just basically says, get started and go do it, and then the ordinance at the end says, this is how it's going to be broke down when you pass that. So there's, I suppose there's benefits to either one, but you can do either one, but like I said in the last one, they did it with deciding after, how it all split out after the, the work was done. And like I said in the end, the thing. And like I said, in the end, the thing, an LID, a local improvement district, is just basically a mechanism to get improvements done in certain areas. It's a way of doing it, and then it's a way of assessing that cost out after the city's gotten it done, and then a payment on how it's going to get paid back.
Mr. Mayor, there's a whole list of people that are around there. Are they? We're gonna have to ask them if they're willing to pay their fair share, but that's what you're saying.
That's part of the process, yes. And they get the right and the option to come in and say they don't want it.
Well, so my question would be, so we're gonna go through this first process, and we're not even gonna know if they're gonna want to do it?
Well, we have, like it says in this particular case, like it says in the resolution, we've been petitioned by a majority of the owners.
Okay.
And so, if what those majorities see that they want, then that's going to carry the day, because according to our charter, you have to have two-thirds to terminate it by the people there. And so, the numbers don't work out if you've got a majority. So, yes, and like I said in the RCA, the council at any time up until basically the very end can, for whatever reason might be, can say, "No, we don't want this type of thing."
Any other questions, the councilors? Council directive.
Mr. Mayor, so moved as recommended?
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Before you do, is, just for the record, Dave Hawley, Charlene Adams, Tim McQuary are my three viewers and the alternate, Nancy Patton.
As mentioned, no money is spent, so there will be no roll call needed. So, at this time, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, I have seven ayes with no nays, approval of resolution number one for 2021. Moving on now to request for council action in first reading. Before we get into that, I do have a public hearing. And so, at this time, at 7:40, I will open up a public hearing. Mr. Mayor, could we take a brief recess real quick, please, before I go into this? Before I go into public?
We will have a brief recess in about five minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead, let's go back up. Just for clarification, we are going to do the public hearing tonight, but because the ordinance package was not introduced for tonight, we are going to postpone, so that's being the actual ordinance to be discussed. So, at this time, at 7:50, I will open up the public hearing, planning public hearing. I will go ahead and start off by, I'll go ahead and start off by
Doing the disclosure statement. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on an appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria. If you have any questions, please wait until the appropriate time and then direct your questions to the council. Please speak one at a time so the recorder knows who is speaking. At this time, declarations of the city council. I do it all three at one time. Do you have any personal bias, conflict of interest, or any ex parte information regarding this? No.
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 Okay, record shows that we have all seven city councilors that do not have any personal bias, conflict of interest, or any ex parte information. At this time, we will turn it over for staff report.
Okay, sorry about the delay. So, this application is for a change to the zoning map. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately 87,962 square feet, 1.96 acres, located approximately 300 feet north of the Main Street and Ninth Avenue intersection. Yeah.
Right in front of the map.
There was a question on the map, one sec. Can you run it?
I'll put the map up. Okay. Shall I continue while he puts the map up?
Go ahead, Blair.
Okay, so it's located approximately 300 feet north of the Main Street and Ninth Avenue intersection in Sweet Home, Oregon 97386. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the highway commercial C2 zone to the residential high-density R2 zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation, high-density residential. The Sweet Home Planning Commission held a public hearing on December 7, 2020. At the hearing, the planning commission reviewed application ZMA 20-04, where they received testimony and deliberated on this matter. The planning commission passed a motion to recommend approval of the application to the city council. That motion of approval specified a 12-day appeal period from the date the decision motion is mailed, and no specific conditions of approval were required. ZMA 20-04 was filed simultaneously with application PD 20-02. Application PD 20-02 is pending the approval of application ZMA 20-04. Application PD 20-02 was approved with conditions at the January 4, 2021, planning commission meeting. The full staff report is in your packet and on the city website for any additional questions or concerns. The main question tonight is to determine whether or not this property should be brought into conformity with the comprehensive plan and be changed to resident, high-density residential.
Any discussions relative to the criteria that must be used? During this presentation, members of the council may ask questions of the staff and clarify any of the application or any part of the zoning ordinance or the applicable information. At this time, is there any questions at council?
About the application itself?
Yes. If not, at this time, we'll go to the testimony. At this time, the applicant's testimony. Does the applicant, any of the applicants here that would like to have a testimony towards us?
This is Steve K. Can you hear me okay?
Go ahead and say it a little louder, and I need name and address, please.
Okay, okay, this is Steve K. With Cascaded Fanning and Development Services. I am representing this application on behalf of the applicant. My address is Field Box 1920, Silverton, Oregon 97381. The staff report, I believe, does a very thorough job of reviewing the proposed map amendment and how it meets the criteria for approval, so I'll just focus on a few items. If you were to take a look at the city's current comprehensive plan map, I'm not sure if the city has that available to view up on the screen, but you'll see that neighborhood properties, which are located north of Nandina Street, are designated high-density residential. Properties that are south of the intersection are designated central commercial, and properties that are north of the railroad right away are designated medium-density residential. Therefore, in addition to this property and this request to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, the proposed zoning and residential use for the site is consistent with the surrounding land use pattern. The applicant has submitted a concurrent request for a plan development of the property, and that's to permit seven single-family lots on this site. If you look at the plan that the developer has for this property, you'll see that there's a riparian corridor along Ames Creek. Future development on this site will be buffered from the commercial uses by that riparian corridor. There's also a proposed private street which enters into the site and runs along the east and north property lines to buffer that development from surrounding properties. The plan development application demonstrates that the applicant's not proposing to impact natural resources on the site, and is, for the most part, minimizing that impact by locating access where it's proposed, utilities away from the riparian zone, and the residential lots in the northern portion of the property. Half of the site will be set aside as open space area along the corridor, and that's going to be protected in perpetuity with that application. The open space area, as well as the proposed recreational amenities and private street improvements, will all be commonly owned and maintained by a homeowners association. So, in closing, the applicant's narrative and exhibits detail how this proposal meets the applicable code criteria. The zone change not only The zone change not only provides consistency with the comprehensive plan, but it also helps provide a need for more affordable single-family housing options in Sweet Home. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your consideration, and I'll be on hand to answer your questions. Thank you.
Any questions, go to the applicant. This time, we'll have testimony in favor. At this time, testimony in favor. Testimony of those wishing to speak in favor of this application. Okay, at this time, I'll have testimony in opposition. Testimony of those wishing to speak in opposition of this application. Okay, at this time, neutral testimony. Testimony from those who neither in favor nor in opposition of this application. I'll open up now, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, could we just, for the record, make sure there's nobody online that wants to speak to this in either of those categories?
That'd be fine. I was not seeing anybody on the screen, that's why I was moving forward, but.
Perfect.
Blair, do you have a question?
No, I was just typing on the meeting chat to make sure people are aware. And we have one, one person who said that their objection is in the meeting packet.
I have a gentleman in the back that would like to be heard. Just name and address real quick, please.
John, if we could, would you mind coming to the front here, please? So we can get you on the mic so everybody online can hear you.
Could I get his last name one more time, please?
Do you want to go ahead and answer that, Ray, or do you want Blair to run that?
I'd ask Blair to.
What do you need me to do?
He's asking two homes that he's concerned about their access.
No.
I, what's the, what's the concern about their access on Steelhead Way?
No.
Repeat your question.
The concern is.
We're using the small cameras mic now, Ray, right behind you.
As I, as I read the map, the access is going to be coming off of Ninth Street, heading west, just north of Nandina Street, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and just north of that proposed access, there's a storage rentals company there.
You mean immediately to the south?
South of it, and just north of that, along Ninth, are two homes that are quite close to each other. And our question is, where, where is this access going to be developed from? Is there enough property in there to do that?
Yes, if, if you can see the map in front of you, there is, you can see the, the storage, on the screen, you can see the map. The storage areas is visible there. The first rectangular property north of the storage area is marked Good Faith Management, that's owned by the applicant. And that, that lot essentially would become the shared driveway, and it is, it is a sufficient size.
Okay, so those two homes can remain there and not be affected?
Oh yeah, this, this would not affect anybody else's building or home at all.
Okay, that's all I have. Now, there was, you say that there was anybody else online that wanted to be heard?
One, one person online said that their objection is in the meeting packet.
Really? No, do we have to read that? I don't think so, but.
No.
Nothing further, I will open up for rebuttal. Does somebody want to be heard?
That was Mr. K., I believe.
Mr. K., did you want to be heard, if so, I need name and address.
This is Steve K. again. I, I just testified earlier for the applicant. Did you, I'm just giving a rebuttal.
Go ahead.
Can you, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So the only thing that I, I would add is that the, the applicant has 50 feet of frontage on Ninth Avenue through that, that rectangular lot that was mentioned by staff. Nothing else to add, unless you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any further questions? Okay, at this time, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:06. I will open up for any other council questions you may have, real quick. There will be no decision this evening by council.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't, I'm, I don't see it on there. It shows it on, up here on the little existing features, but I don't see where that hydrant is. The fire hydrant, is there one there?
I think it's one across the street. I recall. Just by driving by, I, I think that there is one there, but the map is not clarifying it that well.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, moving on. Again, we are not going to address the ordinance bills or any, any other further until next meeting on January 26th. There is no second reading of ordinance bills. At this time, there's a third reading of ordinance bill, Request for Council Action, Ordinance Number 13 for 2020, Ordinance Number 1292, Sweet Home Ordinance pertaining to the Registration, Maintenance, Safety, and Security of Vacant Buildings in Commercial Industrial Zones on Page 231. This time, open questions, council. It's time we go ahead and then read this by title, the Ordinance Number 13 for 2020 by title only.
Ordinance Bill Number 13 for 2020, Ordinance Number, Sweet Home Ordinance pertaining to the Registration, Maintenance, Safety, and Security of Vacant Buildings in Commercial and Industrial Zones.
This is Ordinance Number 1292.
Need a council directive, and it will be by roll call.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Ordinance Bill Number 13 for 2020 as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, but roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman?
Aye.
Counselor Sanchez?
Aye.
Counselor Richards?
Aye.
Counselor Gorley?
Aye.
Mayor Mahler?
Aye.
Counselor Trask?
Aye.
Counselor Gerson?
No.
Let the record show, you have six ayes with one nay. Approval of Ordinance Number 13 for 2020. Ordinance Number 1292. Now moving on to committees. We've got several things that's in the middle of, in the middle of a process that we, it's got some very much timelines that we need to meet fairly quick and soon. For those new councillors, these are committees that you get assigned to. However, I'm going ahead and going ahead and move forward with a couple committees because of certain timelines we got to meet very fast, very quick here, especially with Planning Commission and a few other things. Admin and Finance Property Committee. Right now, we have Counselor Gerson and Counselor Trask on that. All I need to know, who wants to chair that? I want to maintain you guys on that. I do need a third. So any other councillor that wants to be on that, let me know now.
I'd be willing to be on that.
Okay, let the record show, Counselor Coleman would like to be on that. So the three, Counselor Coleman, Counselor Trask, and Counselor Gerson will be on the Admin Finance. We've got to, we've got openings on the Planning Commission that need to be addressed pretty quick and soon here because of things and topics that are, which one would like to chair that? Okay, Counselor Trask will be chairing the Admin Finance Committee. The next is the Charter Review Committee. We're right in the middle of that, too. And again, Counselor Trask and Counselor Gerson were on that. I think we only needed two on that one.
We're going to meet next.
And Counselor Gerson, you were chairing that. So we're going to maintain that because we're right in the middle of the charter review. Park and Tree Committee, there's also some things that's right in the middle of that process going on right now with our parks. I will maintain Counselor Trask as part of the parks because he's been involved in quite a few things that are currently ongoing right now with that. That aside, we have a Youth Advisory Council. Counselor Gerson was in the middle of some projects within the school district and what we're trying to achieve, and if we can get that back up and going. So I'm going to maintain Counselor Gerson in the Youth Advisory Council. That's just a one person in charge of that one. Now, the rest of them, the Chamber of Commerce, Council of Governments, Area Commission of Transportation, Solid Waste Advisory Council, Ad Hoc Committee on Health. Let me back up on Ad Hoc Committee on Health. Counselor Gorley is heavily involved in that. I'm going to assign her still with that, so that's not going to change. However, I would like to have, she will be chairing the Ad Hoc Committee, but I would like to have at least one other councillor to be on part of that committee. So any councillor that would like to be part of the Ad Hoc Committee, please let me know, okay? But she will be chairing that. And then last was Legislative Committee. So those that I've mentioned, especially new councillors or any other councillors, if you would like to be part of that, please let me know before January 26th meeting. If I do not hear by January 26th meeting of who would like to be on what committees, I will, I will be assigned because I have to fill those before then, okay? So please let me know, it's imperative.
Mr. Mayor, is there a place that we can find information about what these committees?
Very good question. Yes, you can either see me or you can see Julie, and she will enlighten you as to what's involved, time commitments, dates, everything that you would ever need to know. She definitely is a world of knowledge sitting over there, and she can help you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mayor's Report. I know it's a little late in the game, but I just want to touch base. Where are we sitting, Ray, with the sandbags? I know we've got some flood reports coming up here.
Sandbag stations have been restocked and are ready for anybody that needs them. We anticipated the heaviest part of the rains have already passed from the information we had this afternoon. So knocking on wood that we have escaped this round much better than we did a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. One last thing. Of all those that are, have been made aware of, our librarian, Rose Pita, has put in a request for retirement. Kind of sad to me because she's done a phenomenal job for our library, and I'm very sad to see her retiring. A lot of things have happened within our community, and it's all been revolved around a lot of things she's done, a lot of grants that she's came with. If anybody's been in that library, you can see she's done a phenomenal job. I wish her the best in her retirement. This Friday, and I'm not still thunder, Ray, but I'll let you know about her retirement party. But very, very sorry to see her leave. She did a phenomenal job for our community and our library. City Manager's Report.
Want to double check with the council. We had originally set February 5th, 6th, and 7th for our training slash goal setting. I want to double check that that still works for everybody and for the two new councillors. I think we've talked about it, maybe not. We want to make sure that those dates will work for you as well. If you have anything particularly you'd like to have on the agenda, if you could let the mayor or I know. We'll have our annual department head reports. We'll again go over the mission and the goals, which will then direct staff work for the next year. We'll certainly have discussions about things like economic development, city property, and review the capital improvement plan along with some other fun and exciting topics like ethics and purchase policies and other exciting things like that. If there's other things that you'd like to see on the agenda, again, if you could let the mayor or I know, and we'll do our best to get that information together so we can present it. And last, Mr. Mayor, your next order of business is the final report that will be given by Library Director Pita. Rose has decided it's time for her to move on to the next chapter of her life. When I first arrived a little over four years ago, I asked Rose what her plans were, and she replied, "I think I have four or five years left." She's proving true to her word. When Rose arrived in Sweet Home nine years ago, the library was operating in the red, significantly in the red. She worked hard not only to get the library to operate in a sustainable manner, but to improve the library's services. She made partnerships with many local organizations like the School District, the Boys and Girls Club. She applied for and secured numerous grants, as well as being instrumental in the formation of the Lynn Libraries Consortium, which has brought thousands of pieces of additional materials to local Sweet Home library users, and at the same time, saved those same users thousands and thousands of dollars. Most recently, Rose developed a mentoring and tutoring program in a partnership with OSU, and has been working very diligently on a leadership program with Rural Development Initiative for our area youth. We will miss Rose. Rose has been a phenomenal advocate for our local library. Rose has, she has given her heart and soul to this community over the past nine years, and we will all miss her sorely. Rose's retirement drive-through, of course, a celebration has to be COVID compliant, so we're doing a drive-through celebration Friday from 11:30 until 1:30 here at City Hall. We will have tents to keep people as dry as possible, but Rose deserves to be celebrated, both for her accomplishments for this community over the past almost decade, but as well as for what lies ahead for Rose as she moves on to the next chapter of her life. It's an exciting time for her. Rose shared with me one time, she's had a job since she was 15 years old. She's never not worked. And so this will be quite a, quite a change for Rose. So Rose, I think you're on and listening, I hope. Thank you very much for everything you've done, and I wish we could do more to celebrate you and what you've done for this community.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you for those kind words. And it has been an honor and a pleasure to work and serve the community here in Sweet Home. I'm, I have no plans of moving anywhere. I'll still be here, so I hope that we can stay in touch.
So, Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation that she has to stay on board to do the grants.
I'll second that. I know, Rose, you don't wear big shoes, but figure to a speech, here's some big shoes, somebody's going to have to feel. somebody's going to have to fill, I'll tell you that right now. So stay in touch, don't be a stranger, and thank you for all your efforts on behalf of the city of Sweet Home. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gorley.
At this time, Community Economic Development Director, any further you want to bring up on your report, or is he gone? I think Greg's gone, too, isn't it? Okay, so no more questions. Assistant Attorney, you have anything? Okay. Last bit of business, it was brought to my attention by a couple of community members, and wanted to bring up a topic of the council, for the council, and I'm going to share with the council, and I want the council to digest this, and if there's so much feeling of effort needs to be put forth, please let me know, or city manager know. We've had a lot of turmoil in our nation, in our state, and obviously, I don't, I can't imagine anybody in this room is, 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 condones violence that has transpired, and the citizens have brought up that we should either have a proclamation or have at least some kind of a statement from the city that we don't allow this anywhere, and so, and I, I have tend to agree that there's no room for violence or anything in, in our city, or in our state, or even our nation. So let, let me know if we want to proceed forward with anything regarding that in our next meeting. Okay? Unless anybody else has anything left to do or say, we will go ahead and adjourn at eight twenty.